And look at what the country is now going through. You left because most of good. But your position, I can tell, and I said it was worse. Because you left and ran to where you thought things are okay. So you can work and live a better life. But suddenly, you cannot even live and enjoy your honeymoon because you have become a social welfare, yet here everything for those who left behind. For every 10 calls you get from Nigeria today. Eleven. So you cannot even enjoy that money you do. That peace, that thing you run away to come and do, you are worsted. You are the social welfare. You are the federal director. You are in charge of hospitals, you are in charge of doctors, everyday you are calling doctors. How is he doing, is he recovering, you know what, they are all. The one paying school fees. The one, even taking them to the level where the one who they are with. As if not, whatever they give you best, you are paid, they do a special, you won't pay. Even don't pay, they keep them in hospital. So there are crisis socials. My dear people, how did we get here? That is the question. How did a country so blessed, a country that was once being celebrated all over the world? All over the world. Countries like China, South Korea, and all these things we are seeing today. Go and shine our situation in 1980. Was not in any way to be compared with us. Today they become something we need to relate. Today we are being reminded about level of dedication, I listened to the Chairman when he was talking and saying, Singapore, Chairman, I don't compare Singapore with Nigeria anyway. I'm one of those who don't do that. One is two things, I don't compare Ted Ward and first Ward, they do think this one is Ted, they don't want it first. I always compare Ted Ward with Ted Ward. Two, Singapore is just about five, six million people and we are 200 million people. But if you would even compare us with Africa, to shock you, that Nigerian budget for education, a country of 200 million people. Our budget for education in the past six years, 2015 to 2021. Six years is not up to, is barely 50%. But not up to on the same budget of South Africa, the second biggest country, their budget for one year in 2021. It does vary around 50, 60% of that. Our budget for six years, 200 million in population, and they are 60 million. South Africa, another Ted Ward. That is the level of crisis we face. I don't want to care. So what has happened? We now live in a country where Nigeria that used to be very safe is now classified among the most harassed country of the world. We are now more, we are now among the highest terms of kidnapping. Yesterday, he was talking about our dedication. The next to say, our art of school have increased to 20 million yesterday, what have you put it? First of September. We now have the highest number of people living in poverty. In fact, we have more people living in poverty than India and China combined. These two countries is now is a total of 2.8 billion, we are 200 million. How did we get here? We were overtaking India in infant mortality. If you go, India is 1.4 billion out of 200 million. But we are overtaking them. Our youths are not doing anything. Trump prevailed us among our youths in the highest in the war, 14.8, when the Afrikaans is 5.8. The crisis just continues like that. What is, how did we get here? Is cumulative effect of leadership failure over the years. Where the leaders have chosen not to do the right thing. And the followers have been insanely complacent. Because they can't blame only the leaders. The followers also insanely complacent. They have chosen to just celebrate criminality and bad governance. We are part of it. And now this one part is telling, we have chosen to say no to this. We must start changing it. We must start dealing with it. How are we going to deal with it? Chairman, do you hear that? I will not be speaking now, I'll be speaking for what the Chairman has charged and everything. Chairman, I know her importance in education. But we will start by securing the country. Let me tell you, we can do this, we can do this. It's not true. We've not decided, we can't have a situation where we have a country where non-state actors and criminals have taken over and are stronger than the government. One must be charged, either the government or the criminals. It is only Nigeria that I give you a speech. Somebody is kidnapped. Taking him to the hospital. The kidnappers are phoning the family of the victim. Telling him we are to keep the money. And even if he becomes sick, doctor goes to see him. They are still talking with the family of the person. They are not aware they are going to keep the money. They know everything, but police don't know. But they are using phone. And they are not aware they are going to give the money. And you're about to tell policemen they said they give the money. But police do not understand. That's what I'm saying, it is a business that we must. We want strong. They would, they would take a science. They cannot control. There's no way, today, in the war, I have a thought on this table. If anybody wants to know where I am, they will find me. If you like going to anyone. They found someone in America, they found that I have, they found in their bedroom. The useless man that are phoning and saying that we are, how people are living in this world. They cannot continue showing you what how to secure a country. I will give you all the details tonight when I show you.
Thank you.
I'm giving you an example. Who will show more and order? Who thought they have a country where bad behavior, riskality, have become a measure of success and power. They cannot continue. We must have big way, must have strength, must have character. And we do simple things where we even accuse of not that far. Because whoever have been in America, they said seven o'clock, I say let's go next. They said no, we got to that, why did we do that? Even though we're not going to be there by seven, by 10 to 7. We must do things where. We can no longer continue to be different. We don't want to be different anymore. We want to do what they are doing. So that when the people go down to shit us, then we will know. Other people, when I became governor of Madamna State, the governor before me, Dr. Christy, was very popular. And everywhere I go, people say, hi. And somebody came over and said, I should stop allowing this man to go all over the place, wherever I am, she will go and say, what they mean? Let's find out what he did to the people like. So we can do it, after that, if there's one, if his native daughter, we are looking for. But we first have to do what they are doing. So I want us to do what the people in the Western war, Singapore, everybody is doing, they need to first. We go to native daughter, wherever I can do this, they like this more. But we cannot be on our own, the heads opposite and assets. We must try choose to hire the best people to do the work. I've been flying around and I've been telling people. So that's to everyone. I was once going to East Africa to study education. What they are doing, why is the education working? In Kenya, I've gone, I've been to Ghana, why is it working in Kenya? Why is it working in Uganda? Why is I saw working in Nigeria? And when I go, Kenya was very expensive, so I couldn't buy a flight, buy a ticket. I was looking for where I could get a cheap airline that would take me to Kenya, Ghana, and this. And I found Elwanda. And I bought their ticket. And I go home and I told my wife that I bought this ticket 50% cheaper than K O's. She said which airline that said one leg? She said, have you flown there before? I said, no. She said, why do you always, lots of cost, want to take, put your life at risk? I said, let me tell you. There must be a hand or a fat pilot in the plane, and I'm sure the pilot doesn't want to die. So he doesn't want to die outside. He thought the most they are reading, why they don't want it, it's more expensive. He thought I tell you every day, the most they are reading, people fly a few years, they don't think it's expensive. There must be a pilot, a pilot must be inside that plane. They will not hire a driver. It must be a qualified person. I got into a wonder air, they have a brand new airbus. Brand new. And we are three in the business class. We took off to the garden, which is the first time before going to Paris. About an hour or two into the flight, the man came out and greeted me and said, good afternoon, my governor. And I told him, I said, boy, he said two of us in that cockpit and the captain of my co-pilot of Nigeria. They were qualified. They hired them because they are qualified. They didn't ask them where they came from. So their nationality was not important. Their tribe was not important. They didn't ask about their religion. They didn't ask about their connection, it wasn't their town, it wasn't their type. We have to go to see all over the world. I have never been to hospital. Because I've never been sick. I tried to, I'm not sure, what is it because less, a war is the best. But I've had a procedure work up and said, we're going to remove something. And I said, fine. So they put me in the nearest hospital in the UK. Everything that was discussed was with one. And they said it's going to be a surgery, two black men will perform this surgery. And here I am in Thai, in the theater. Two black people walked in. This is a brother, I thought that was, I thought that this is the problem, any team in Nigeria, what are they doing there? And two of them, I do this, one is from Odo, one is from Obi. I'm not going to see everywhere here in the market. They don't ask them where they come from, they don't know their tribe, they are celebrating because they are qualified. In Nigeria, what would they do? These are things we want to avoid. So we start a movement to say, these are things that brought us where we are. We want to bring stability in the political. Bring what will make it work. And you are going to be part of it. Our human capital, Chairman, I'm not sure, is too low. We are number 168, number 170. The more you invest in education, the better your development. And you can't talk about fiscal infrastructure, we are dealing with human infrastructure. Today, everybody knows that knowledge drives everything. And you don't invest in it. Our universe is closed now for six months. And we are doing that to do for foreign investors. We cover our events. You have no security. You have no human capital. You have no electricity, and you want someone to come and invest. They better have their life to enjoy the experience. So is there public? Everybody has been talking about power. Tell me, is there any local science about power? The fastest development of power in the past 10 years happened in Egypt, Vietnam, and India. All these countries that they work on. Egypt has doubled their power generation from under 20,000 megawatts to over 50,000, break down. Vietnam had gone from 36,000 to about 75,000. And of course, India is phenomenal. I don't want to compare what they do, everything. How did they do it? What did they do? To tell you how bad it is, Nigeria cannot generate beyond 4,000 megawatts in the past call it almost 20 years. We are number one country in Africa, the biggest in Africa. We are the giant in Africa, 200 million people. And we are generating, distributing 4,000 megawatts. And we are not worried about, we are not panicking. The second biggest economy in Africa is South Africa. 60 million, about 60 million population, they are generating about 50,000. And three weeks ago, he came from South Africa. President Abou Zana declared emergency power, three weeks ago, am I right? And said that every South African that come in can generate up to 100 megawatts without license. Somebody that is generating 50,000, declare emergency, the person will fall down and it's getting over him. That is enough to shut down the entire country until it erupts. The same thing in Egypt. Egypt declared emergency in power. And in five years, moved from about 20,000 to over 50,000. But we are not declaring emergency because it's not necessary. Today, we are the only country in the world, apart from Venezuela, the only open country. The only open country apart from Venezuela because of sanctions, that is not meeting this oil quota. And the time oil price is high. Venezuela is because of sanctions. And that we need every dollar. And this is the eighth year greatest cost of any dollar. Every other person who has it can then increase their quota. But our quota is 1.8 million, about 10 days. And we are not meeting it. Throughout the month of July, on the average, our daily quota was 1,003,300. So every day we could not do several hundred, 17,000 of what we are supposed to do. Throughout the month of July, that's one days, we lost 2,287 barrels. And throughout that month, the average sale was about 110. So we lost 2 billion, 445 million dollars. Which is a used rate, I told them when I spoke to the lawyer, I said, because every time I use rate of my own official rate, their own official rate is 410, mine is 250. And they were like, why would I use that rate? I said, because that is the rate that is available to me and every other person. That one you will use, there is a product we can get, we can't get it. So I use the one that is available to us, I said to them, if your rate is 410, mine is 250, combine the two of them, it will give us 1,100, why didn't you do 3? So I find that way, so I'm not at the time. And if you multiply it with that, you see that we lost one, one month, we lost 1 trillion 344 billion dollars. This is a country that is borrowing everything. Just to tell you how bad, this is a country that needs all the money. And you're losing this one. You're losing this because you could not contribute to your quota. This is something you can end legitimately. The same country between April, by end of April, January to 30th of April, that country earned 1 trillion 630 billion as revenue, central revenue. The expenditure of government within the same period was 4 trillion 720. And every story, 8.1 trillion dollars. Within that four months, and you're losing this one. How do you know that it, oil is not sweet? It's not something you can go to the shop and put in your pocket. For oil to be stolen, a vessel must come in. And no vessel can go into another country without approval of the legislature. Or it will be wrong. So again, it's official. It is endless. So we will deal with stealing. We will deal with corruption. Let nobody tell you can't stop corruption. It's not true. And I think it's not true, go and say that it will be, saying you this night, you can't stop corruption. If you are not stealing, you, who is the best? Local government chairman, governor, president, if you are not stealing, so you're not corrupt. So we can't trust number one. If your wife and children are not stealing. They are not stealing. So number two, if those around you are not stealing, you reduce it by 70%. And I go throughout America, and I challenge all of you, and I challenge every other person. I was governor of Madamna State in eight years. And received in total about 500 billion dollar over a billion. Out of which we saved 15%, the document said, go and show me where 5%. I'm not saying, I said you can't say 5% of that money is missing.
Going very far.
1% of it is 5 billion, go and show me where it's missing. And go and trace that 1% to be told me, I won't be talking to anybody again. So let me tell you, it's not possible. How we need to do is to do the right thing. And you can do it. You do such the efficient. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy. We are against, AMF asked yesterday, I said, Peter, you say this thing, are you saying this country, you can no longer borrow money? Where are you going to get the money to do the work? I said, I've never campaigned against borrowing. Every country on the world borrows. America today is almost reaching 100% of the GDP at that. It's simple. And that is the biggest economy in the world, it still remains the biggest. Yes, it's only in almost 100% of the GDP, but it's still the biggest economy. China is number two, is only 60% of the GDP. Our one is not up to that. Japan is number three, is going to maybe 30%. Even Singapore is cited, their debt is only 30% of their GDP. But if you go to Singapore, I cite them, in the constitution is written, documented, all borrowed money is for investment. The difference between what we are going through and what they're not going through, when you borrow for investment, you grow, if you borrow for consumption, it was true. Nigerian debt to GDP is about 30%, but we can no longer make savings because the money we borrow, nobody can find it. If I had time, I'd show you, and I showed highness, countries that borrow with us. I don't depend on my highness, two countries that borrow with us, how they grew, and how they managed. Show me that we threw away the money. That's what happened to us. Egypt added the power of saying, for about 20 billion dollars. And thus giving a rough estimate. Their money we borrow within that billion is almost 100 billion dollars. So what they are all doing, they doing for the education, they doing for health, they doing for people out of poverty. They doing for power, so what? Even when snakes want us something, they do not play, they do see, and they put the work, and they will for me to watch us. Everything is strange. So they don't want it. Snakes want all this, and I understand. Can't even find it. So these are the crises we face every day. And people will give you a school. Many people, all this can change. And that is always aim to do. Do not. It will be a win-win for you. Even have good government there. What you're going through, even as a year, less is it. We want to make that country productive. Today is not productive. It is, we don't live a life of sharing, corruption, everybody is still making criminality. Country of two hundred million people. Our productive capacity is only up to thirty percent of our population. Because we are not invested in human capital, would not support every area that can keep start production. Because we are stealing. Nobody wants to know. Somebody asked me, I saw it, because they brought something, a question, said, what would I do to stabilize the economy? The only thing you need to stabilize your currency is production. You produce as much. When America launched support for ten war countries. They launched in Africa, Agua. Clinton even came celebrating it in Africa. He was showing how Africans can now do soft clothing, shoes and everything, and export it back. They didn't deserve the nation. Going to shops in America and all over the Western world today. You see clothing from Bangladesh, Vietnam, everywhere. When they launched this, there were more cloth maybe as lava. Than there were Bangladesh. But because the country of corruption, where it is that's today, we aim for wire up as sixteen billion dollars. Bangladesh is from exporting clothing at six billion dollars. Vietnam, so Vietnam today exports thirty-two billion dollars of clothing. Our last year export is eighteen trillion nine hundred billion dollars. Official rate forty-seven billion, my rate thirty billion. We are two hundred billion people living on nine hundred twenty-three thousand square kilometers of land. Vietnam is hundred million, living on three hundred ninety-one thousand square kilometers of land. So they have a ton of our land, half of our population, their export last year is three hundred twelve billion. Ours is ten. So we're up to nothing. A country like Israel is twenty-two point something square kilometers of land. So if we give them our twenty-three thousand, twenty-three thousand. We have nine hundred thousand remaining. We are nine hundred twenty-three thousand square kilometers. There are just two thousand of the square kilometers. If we give Israel twenty-three thousand, they have nine hundred thousand. Israel is nine million. Let's say they are ten, we are two hundred, so that's the ten million, that one ninety remaining. Israeli export last year is nine point eight billion dollars. It's almost to wire start own export for two hundred million people. What is the talent in Israel that we don't have in Nigeria? What are people talking? I've been to the best schools in the world, west. And I tell them, if they were subjected to the type of school I went to, I'll say. I said to them, I said, I gave it a lecture in one of the schools I went to, one I went to, Canada, Cambridge, I said, if you, you're here where you stay and you have the choice of what you eat, whether you're going to eat some of this, and you say, you say, you have this type of result. If people in Nigeria were subjected to it, we would have this class. Then we were finding food, doing all sorts of things, here in the south, you drink wine to eat and. So they love what you tell them that we are. What they have is they have goodness and they have committed it to the future of the country. That is what we are doing. Election twenty twenty-three is important to Nigeria. Is important, we cannot continue this excuse. Is important to you. We want to change Nigeria. Extremely important. And it coming, it is. So what I said. Just two simple things other people are doing. Now we're not having secret. They should be known, the president, the vice president, everybody should, they do lose law, you must follow it. You must have a best behavior. Power company, I went to each to store their power. I went to the power facility. I went to the company that built it, had a meeting with managing director. Went to the finance desk, went to everybody, and this company is also in Nigeria.